Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the March fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two Select Board Meeting that I will call to order at six thirty-five this evening. If everybody could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Is there any public comment this evening? Go ahead. Yep. Yep, if you can just state your name and your address.
My name is Ann Gray, and I live at forty-nine Rosedale Ave., which is right on the first baseline of the Franklin School. And I sent you, the five members of the Planning Board, an email last week, so I'm assuming that you all got it. I'm not going to reiterate that because I don't, I respect your time. I'm here tonight because when I got, I finally was, I figured out how to sign up to get notifications, and I got notification of the meeting tonight, and there were two items that were of interest to me because I was unaware of, I'm new to this, and I was unaware of their existence. But one in particular is the Development Agreement for Royal Crest. And I know, Melissa, you told me that's something that's not public knowledge, ahead of time not posted because it's negotiations with the developer to try to, for lack of a better word, phrase, sweeten the pot, to make the project more appealable, more interesting to the town. And it sounds like what the town gets at the end of it is what's been negotiated without input on it. So it's kind of an up or down vote from a town standpoint. So I wanted to just take a few minutes to give my input to it and just, you know, just a couple of ideas I had about that may, they may have been considered in the past. I don't know. I don't know what's in it. You guys do. But one of my concerns, and first off, before I do anything else, I want to thank you for what you do because you hear everybody's complaints more than you hear thanks. And I know, I've poured through these documents, and the Planning Board has been great, and there's been a lot of work that's gone into this on both sides. And I've been on the Zoom calls with the developer. I haven't been at any planning meetings, I just simply didn't know about them. I thought it would be notified as in a butter, but the, you know, the ways of notifying people are different for this type of zoning change. I understand that. So, thank you. So as I look at the Development Agreement, there's a few things that I just want to throw in there as, you know, and you may have heard them before, but I'm gonna, so I, one of my concerns with regard to the density of the project, and I saw on the town website, I went there this afternoon, and all of the documents are indexed, so whoever did that, I'm thinking it might have been Bonnie because she was my helper, she was fabulous. But whoever did that, thank you. It really makes the documents much more accessible. It's very helpful. But it's a very dense project, and it kind of feels like a city within a town, we're a suburb, and it's a very, very dense area, very big development. And I believe in property, it's private property, and they have a right to develop it, so I'm not one of those people that say, you can't do anything. But I think that it's a, it's very, the density of it, and in particular, one of the documents that was added was comparing the density of Royal Crest to other developments that have been going on recently. And one of the statements is, is seventeen buildings per acre, okay? But I think, you know, it's kind of hard to compare, the real, the real thing you want to compare is floor area ratio, and the floor area ratio for Royal Crest is second highest, it's point sixty-six percent. And when you include the park, the four parking decks, it's at eighty-one percent. And just generally why that's relevant is people in my neighborhood, when there are buildings that go up, their basements get flooded. I know there's been a lot of talk about water, water studies and all that, but no one has been able to answer the question, will our basements get flooded with this? And just throwing that out there as an issue for the project. But with regards to the Development Agreement and density, one of the things happened many years ago, I've been in town for thirty-five years, I think Police Chief Stanley was around at this time. We had a lot of problems with break-ins in homes and cars with neighborhoods right off of one fourteen. And I get the Eagle Tribune and subscriber for years, so I read it, and I remember one of the police saying, it's really hard because people come in, they break into a car, and they're on one fourteen, and they're gone. And I'm thinking about Royal Crest that now has, with this new design, has four entrances as opposed to one that is gated, and what that's going to mean in terms of crime, and the ability to protect the residents that live there, and the business owners, and college students. So I'm thinking, well, you're gonna have drug dealing there, and if anybody's caught, the police are on the other side of town. I would like to see as part of the Development Agreement, a substation put into the Royal Crest area. And I brought it up on the Zoom call and kind of go, oh, yeah, well, we'll look into that kind of thing. So I just think in terms of keeping it safe, reducing the amount of crime that happens there, you need a deterrent. And it's just been a problem before, it will be, especially with the density. And, you know, right now, when you look at a heat map of our town, the place where the crime is the highest is in the most dense areas. So it's likely that that will happen in this other area as well. The other thing that, and I don't know if this is appropriate for the Development Agreement or not, is that from the very beginning, this has seemed to me as a way to solve Merrimack College's problem, okay? There's, you know, the dorm on that side along, I feel like the dorm should actually be on, on the Merrimack College for a whole bunch of reasons, and the foot traffic and the car traffic, and just once again, the crime that would happen, okay? And I asked the developer on one of the calls about being able to restrict rentals not to college students. And he said something about, you know, well, I don't know if we can do that, and it gets kind of complicated with discrimination, but my understanding of the law is that it is legal to say, we will not rent to college students.
It's not one of the protected classes.
It's not a protected class, yes. So I'm looking at this because my daughter went to Marist, it's very similar, Route Nine, Route one fourteen, school on one side, dorms on the other, they had a tunnel that went under. And all this housing there that was for the students, rental housing, and my daughter lived off campus because it was cheaper than paying the, paying what you have to pay to live in the dorm. So, you know, I see that we have, you know, a lot of rental units, hundred and ninety-nine townhomes that, they keep calling them townhomes, but I haven't seen anything in writing that indicates that they're condominiums and that there's ownership involved, or that there's any restrictions put on who can live there. So, you know, Merrimack College has thirty-four acres across Elm Street where they could, where they could put their dorms and their college students. But this, I would like to see some type of restriction on how many students can live there. I don't know if that's appropriate for the Development Agreement, but it's a concern for, for the residents that, that live in the area. Third item is the, the foot traffic and the car traffic. And I know I read, you know, the police chief's letter and indication that the new, getting rid of the Hawk Light and moving the light down, down the street would be, actually be safer, and I understand that. I would ask if there's any way you can put a fence or something on the, on the median strip, because they had at my daughter's school, because, you know, kids are in a hurry, they're not going to go down the block or so to wait for the light, they're going to run across. And I think that's a safety issue, and, you know, we've already had someone killed on that, that street. So I would, if you can put it in there, I don't know if it's a DOT thing or what, but I think that's something that would help to improve the safety there. And then finally, I just want to follow up, Chris, with, with you. We had spoken on Friday and talked about the school impact, because that's the first thing everybody says, oh, the schools. And I read all the, I read the fiscal impact study and looked at the numbers and all that. And my concern is that we have individual projects coming up, and this one doesn't, you know, this, it doesn't have an impact because it's not that many students. But I don't see anything in writing that says there's not going to be an increase to the town budget because of this. And what I saw in the feedback from Franklin, Atkinson, Kittredge, and the middle school was feedback saying, well, do we, we need, we need more space here, we need, we, how many special ed rooms do we need? We have this many, we're going to need more. So I, I don't know who makes that decision about recommending to move forward or not, if the, I mean, it's yes or no, it does or it doesn't, and what are the impacts of any improvements that would have to be made to the town in addition, or new schools, or nothing? Because I haven't seen anything in writing that says, you know, one way or the other, okay? And then finally, I just wanted to ask, because I read the law today, about the housing community legislation and changing the, and I think that's one of the things that will be on the town warrant articles, to change from a two-thirds majority to a fifty-one percent majority to pass this, this zoning. And my question is, my understanding is that you can't, if there is a part of the zoning that requires a two-thirds majority, you can't have an overlay district for something that's outside of the categories which are approved for overlay, right? So what I, my understanding from looking at it is the hotel requires a special permit, and the special permit sort of dispensation, if you will, has to do mostly with parking. And so I would, I would just ask if there's, I mean, I don't know if that's going to go forward. I'm hearing that there's going to be a fifty-one percent instead of a two-thirds majority, and I don't know if anyone can comment on where that, where that stands.
So typically, we don't have any of this on our agenda. So we really, it's not a conversation that we can have, but we are moving into a joint Planning Board meeting where I think it would be appropriate to have that conversation since it's all on the agenda with that part of the meeting.
Yeah, it's not on the agenda. We're not supposed to talk about it.
Oh, sorry, I'm known to the game.
You're fine, but at our, at our next meeting, Superintendent Gilligan will be there, Superintendent Mailey, our school capacity consultant, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So I think at the meeting that we're having at seven thirty, I think we'll be able to answer a lot of the questions.
Okay, all right, thank you. That's all. Thank you very much.
Is there any other public comment? No? Okay.
Manager, can I ask that people who don't know what's in the development, that they could have public comment after? It's very difficult to speak on something that you don't even, you haven't, haven't seen.
I've never restricted anybody from commenting.
No, you haven't. No, no, you haven't. So, thank you.
All right, so I will actually ask the Community Preservation Committee Chair, Brian Roach, to come up and present their recommendations for this year's CPC funding.
Thank you. All right, how do I get on the screen for you guys? At CPC, we're a little less technically inclined, so I'm counting on you guys here. Someone just need an HD monitor or something.
I appreciate it.
Thank you, Melissa. Okay. Excellent. Can everybody see my screen?
Yeah.
Thank you. My name is Brian Roach, I'm the Chair of the Community Preservation Committee. So I want to share with you guys tonight our recent recommendations, we just voted on Thursday after getting our applications in for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three. This is our current, current board. Tim Sheerhart is our most recent addition. I also want to call out Dan Beckley and Bernadette Curran, our staff members who have been unbelievably supportive, just really, really great help in getting us through everything we, we need to do, along with, of course, Lori and Melissa, have been really, really helpful as we've worked our way through this year's appropriations. Tonight, I want to start by kind of talking a little bit about what we ended last year on, some of the initiatives we were working on, and give you a quick update as to where all those things stand. We'll talk about the numbers, and then I'll go through our actual proposals and recommendations for this year. One of the first things we suggested, we talked about at the end of last year, was creating awareness of all the great things that CPA does. And we have currently a CPA map and website on the town website. It is really needed, needs a good deal of updating and needs some improvements or accuracy. Tim Sheerhart, maybe because he's the new guy, has decided to take this one on. We are in the process of loading, you know, hopefully twenty years' worth of documents into each of these files, so, so residents can actually see where their tax dollars are going for each of the projects that we're working on. So that has begun. COVID didn't help things. You know, losing our IT guy in the middle of things didn't help things, but we're getting there, and we're, we're on track. Additionally, along with creating awareness, is project signage. One of the biggest things I've noticed the past few years being on the committee is you can go throughout town and see a number of different parcels that have been acquired with CPA dollars that look like private parcels. People who'd not know any, any of the difference, it's owned by that a butter or someone else. And that's really concerning, I want the taxpayers to be able to see where their money is going every year. So we've put together this signage package. Rick Green on our committee took, took the lead on this, and now this is included in every one of our applications. There's always going to be an allotment, we make, let every applicant know that if appropriate, there'll be an allotment for a sign to, to go along with their project. And you can actually see example of this on the Glenny Woodlot parcel that we funded just recently, so that's the first one that's been up. And you also notice there's a little QR code on there that if you're going hiking, or if you're going to any one of these properties, you can scan with your phone, and it'll bring you back to the aforementioned website, once that's all updated and ready to go. So next step after we get through this funding cycle is to go through a project to get back signage put on a lot of these old projects. So you should hopefully start to see these popping up around town.
I love this idea.
Thank you.
I really do.
I think it's been, it's been a long time coming. Don Sign Tech, Rick Green had to go through a lot of rigmaroles, we were working through the various design, I think we had four different meetings just on the sign. But now we're there, it's an, it's an addendum to the application, so now everyone's clear as what is going forward, so.
I would say the QR code maybe looks a little big if it's the size of the town seal. Maybe consider readjusting that.
Absolutely, we can, we can talk about that. I don't know if a QR code made onto the Glenny Woodlot sign yet, so, but I will talk about, I'm not sure what the appropriate size is, you know, for it to actually work, but your point is, is very well taken. So especially in proportion to the town seal. So. We talked about our process refinement a little bit last year. As I look at every meeting we have, it's an opportunity to do better, to work on, you know, better documentation, better discussion, better process as we work through each of our, all of our deliberations. And I think we've been, we've done really well with that this year. Being back in person really helps. Our last two meetings have finally been back in person, and you can actually notice a difference, I'm sure you guys have felt the same way when you got back in, back in this room. We talked about pre-application process. This year, we held a meeting in December for anyone who's considering coming forward with CPA application. It was the best attended meeting that I think I've seen in the years that I've been on here. We had a lot of great ideas, some of them came forward as projects, others didn't. It gave us an opportunity to discuss different ideas for projects that residents had, give some feedback on the process, and I think at the end of the day, yielded a better process with better applications. And this is again where I really got to call out Dan Beckley, worked hand, hand in hand with a number of different applicants to really guide them through the process for, for a successful application. And then increased communication with town stakeholders. I mean, I think we've got really good relationships with the various boards represented in our committee, conservation, recreation, planning, and, and housing, and we have a good relationship with this board as well. We want to, you know, continue to build upon that with all the various stakeholders in town, Master Plan Implementation Committee, folks at Fireside Catering, whoever it could be that we're going to be interacting with with CPA dollars, we want to make sure we understand everyone's priorities so that we're helping seek out projects, you know, for, for funding in future years. I should say, by the way, if you have any questions, go ahead and stop me along the way, this can be interactive, so. Next up, on the numbers. So I went over these with, with Lynn Savage today. Our current fund balance at the end of February stands at just over thirteen million dollars, with about nine million dollars, nine and a half million dollars in current encumbrances. I can speak to any one of those, I mean, pretty straightforward, the open space recreation, the majority of that is middle school fields. Historic preservation is largely Ridgewood, as well as the Stevens, Stevens Library Stair Project. And the affordable housing is mostly within, so I think it's the kitchen renovations, a lot of that stuff was delayed due to COVID. Right, is it kitchen, kitchen bathrooms, I think, Lori?
That's the Housing Authority property.
Housing Authority.
Yeah.
Yeah, thanks. Yeah, that's, that's where the housing, most of those housing dollars are locked up right now. That leaves the net balance just under three and a half million. We're anticipating roughly another three million dollars in receipts for the end of this fiscal year through to next year. The state match, just as an aside, last year was, was really large for some, for some reason. I don't actually have a real good answer as to why it was, but it's much more than this. We're back to a more conservative number here, about five hundred and ninety thousand. That leaves our projected available balance just over six and a half million. We are only recommending an appropriation this year of just under seven hundred thousand to leave us with an ending balance of five point nine. Not a terrible spot to be in, to have that, that extra cash for projects as they come forward. We do expect some, some bigger ticket items in the, in the coming years, so I think this puts us in a, in a strong position. With that, we'll move on to our applications. We received ten applications this year, just over five point seven million dollars, the majority of which in a single application. After our vote on Thursday night, we decided to move forward with seven of those applications in full, one application we approved at a reduced amount, and two applications we are recommending not to move forward with. This year's appropriations puts about sixty percent in, in the recreation bucket, twenty-two percent in historic preservation, and about sixteen in affordable housing. Again, a much smaller appropriation than we've had in, in recent years. And once this is all said and done, this is what we'll look at, going back to the twenty years of the presentation we looked at last year, assuming that all of these applications are funded and approved, this is about what our allocation would be all time within North Andover. A good chunk of money.
Fairly balanced, too.
Yeah, it's fairly balanced. I mean, the open space and recreation sometimes get, you know, are considered one category for legislation purposes, but yeah, I would agree, it's, it's fairly well balanced. I'd like to get that housing one up a little bit if we could, but. So moving into this year's appropriations, the first one that I want to talk about with you guys is the, the high school cross-country course. I was unaware up until this year that the, the cross-country team was actually, doesn't really even have a home course. And they're losing that home, the course that they had been considering their home course down at Harold Parker. So Coach Varney and A.D. Nugent came to us this year with an appropriation for a hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars to create a course on existing and some new trail networks in and around the Stevens State and, and Wire Hill. The committee was enthusiastically behind this project. It provides a, a course that's very close to the high school, it's a much safer course for, for kids. I don't know if everyone knows why we didn't have a home course, is there was an accident along Osgood Street, and I think, I think a runner actually may have been killed a number of years ago. And this brings it back home, keeps them off the street, gives them a great place to train that's close to the high school. It also uses, you'll notice, just to the plan south of the Stevens State, a portion of the six thirty-five Osgood Street property, which the town acquired in two thousand and fourteen, uses a portion of that land, which to date really hasn't been, hasn't been utilized. So we're very excited about this project moving forward. And it should be ready for this season, is what I'm told. If you have to get, if you have to get a few runners out there, you know, digging some shovels. Next, the Historical Society came for us, came to us for a restoration and preservation project for a Johnson Cottage in the amount of a hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars. This is their headquarters. There's a number of small projects that need to be included as part of this application, you know, painting, repair on the shutters, installation of a vapor barrier, you know, when you have a building this old in that situation, there's a lot of preventive maintenance that goes into this. Mr. Howard was actually very well, very, has, they have a great plan that they're following to keep this, keep this building in, in good shape. Additionally, as a part of our discussions the other night, we were able to get a historic preservation restriction on the building. I always assumed there was one, and I think it's probably always made sense that, you know, the Historic Society is going to protect their building, but I don't think it was ever documented. So as a part of this application, they're agreeing to, to a mutually, mutually negotiated historic preservation restriction on this building in particular. The Affordable Housing Trust, in conjunction with the Housing Authority, is coming to us for a hundred thousand dollar application this year for the design phase of twelve additional units at Fountain Drive. This is on state-owned property. I think there's a, there's a lot of discussion in our meeting back and forth about how these new buildings will interact with the existing Fountain Drive, Fountain Drive property, which has its own needs assessment, it's been prepared by the Housing Authority. This was a, you know, a no-brainer from the committee's standpoint to add, you know, these, this additional housing. With a total price tag, we're guessing it's going to be somewhere in that three and a half million dollar range. This may be one of the projects that'll be the bigger ticket items coming down the road in future years. So the discussion around the disparity was more, not, not in a way of, hey, let's not build at, you know, more affordable housing, as much as it was, let's make sure we don't forget about everything in the Housing Authority where they do have to have some, some investment in those properties that are there, there currently. And that is a part of that overall needs assessment. We got two applications from the Friends of North Andover Trails. The first one is for just over fifteen thousand dollars for the construction of boardwalks at Mazuranko Farm. Again, this is one that was, was approved pretty easily by the committee. They, all the trails in town have seen a huge increase in use throughout COVID. This one in particular, a couple of those trails, the Scout Trail and the Locust Trail, run near some pretty low-lying land by Rais Pond and is part of the overall watershed. So these are, I think, seven and eight hundred-foot boardwalks that'll help keep people's feet out of the mud as, as these continue to get use throughout the town.
What else depends for erosion, right?
Was that, anything else for erosion, protect the watershed? Correct, yep. Additionally, Phonak came to us, and as I mentioned, on the, on the cross-country trail, they want to put a, another walking, hiking, you know, cross-country skiing trail on a portion of the six thirty-five Osgood Street property. In order to do that, to do the loop that you see there in purple, there's two spots where there's an intermittent stream that crossed that property, so there'd be two small bridges, and those are going to be hopefully sited at the narrowest point to limit any impact from a conservation standpoint. As I mentioned, you know, when the town acquired this property using CPA dollars, it was to preserve the scenic vistas and allow for some passive recreation. And the opportunity to see these vistas, which are tucked way back, is really limited unless you have a trail to go, to walk on them and, and spend some time on this property. So this is eleven hundred dollars, most of it's going to be in about, you know, four hundred hour, or a bunch of hours of sweat equity from the folks at Phonak, but it's really just for labor, so. The Stevens Moore Library came to us this year for fifty thousand dollars for a design study on the north portion, you see the point, you can see there in the photo of their lawn. What they would like to do with this is make it a better outdoor, more attractive area where they can have activities and have events. Neighbors did express some concerns early on that, and I was unaware of this myself, that if you go by at certain points in the evening, you can see a number of cars kind of lined up right to the point where the Wi-Fi signal cuts out, that folks are actually sitting in their cars, pulling off the Wi-Fi. So some neighborhoods, neighbors have expressed some concerns about this becoming more of a hangout. That's the whole point of this design study, is to get that feedback from the neighbors, to understand what folks want to be. They couldn't stress enough how much they want to be a neighbor within the library, library district. So I suspect there'll be things like turning off the Wi-Fi at a certain, certain point and designing the, the area in a way that it becomes useful during the day, but maybe isn't as good of a hangout at night, so. But again, this is a design, a design phase, not, not sort of construction, to answer all those questions. Next, we have almost an extension of a project we funded last year, the Wire Hill Gateway. The Planning Department, the Trustees of Reservations, came to us because they're, they're seeing a good amount of erosion and too much foot traffic really down close to the water between where the canoes are docked and the actual trail. You can see on that, the, the red outline is where folks are taking a shortcut. So the yellow line on that plan will be a new post-rail fence, which is designed to discourage people and their pets from getting too close to the water supply. You can actually see in the photo, someone has a dog right down at the edge at low watermark. So, you know, we're not trying to intentionally limit the attractiveness of the trails, many people like to go there to, to get as close as possible to the water, but given us the water supply, and it's everyone's obligation to protect it, we think this is, they feel this is definitely important to, to keep people just a little further back and almost kind of look, look but don't touch and keep your pets out of the, out of the water, so. Staying on the lake, we actually had a really good application from Ted Kelly, a resident in conjunction with the, the DPW. There's a boat ramp, as I think everyone's aware, up on the north end of the lake, that is in pretty severe disrepair. It may have been originally built and designed to use as a trailer boat ramp, but It may have been originally built and designed to use as a trailer boat ramp, but trailer boats are not allowed in the lake anymore, and there's a handful of residents who want to put in their canoes or rowboats, whether it's to go fishing or whatever it is that they want to do and enjoy the lake, but the dock in and of itself right now is just, it's almost unsafe. And there's an additional issue with the bulkhead along the edge of that, where it's really collapsing into the water, which I think we've experienced further down 133. It's another project that DPW is working on as well. So this application was for the study, design permitting of a new boat ramp for the lake. We had a lot of discussions with this one. Dan went back and forth, the applicant, the applicant met with the harbor master, met with the folks at DPW, and we're having a lot of concern about building a large boat ramp that really shouldn't be necessary if you can't put a trailer in to begin with. So what the committee felt was that was time to maybe study this a little bit further and approve, we approved a lower amount of just under $90,000 to further the study and work on some design, but maybe not necessarily go ahead with in permit and spend all those additional permitting costs until we actually know what it is that we think is feasible and what we want to build. We didn't want to get too far ahead of ourselves, and all of a sudden, you know, if you look at $150,000, those soft costs, rough estimates of 15% on project cost, are we building a million-dollar boat ramp that you can't put trailers in? We want to make sure we're exploring the right balance we found of protecting the water and giving the residents something that they want to, you know, that they can use. So we approved the first three of the five phases that Mr. Kelly applied for, and I really do want to call him out and applaud him for his efforts. We don't always get resident applications. This was a good one. He was very diligent. Selfishly, he probably wants to be able to put his boat in there and go fishing, but that's okay. This would be a, if we're going to have a boat ramp, we may as well make sure that it's safe and usable, so. And those were all the applications that we approved for this year. I do want to discuss two applications that came in, which we did not approve. The first one, I think you are all very much familiar with, received an application from the town manager for $656,000 as a portion of proceeds to acquire the property at 400 Great Pond Road. This one, we had a good deal of discussion around, and what it came down to for the committee was there were still a lot of unanswered questions, as often happens when you have a property like this that goes in the market, and we need to react accordingly. Some of the options for this included potentially, and I think the reason, be able to raise the lake water, right, which is, I think, a very valid reason, may not fit within CPC guidelines. I think it would be allowable, but maybe isn't necessarily the spirit of it, because it would require removal of a building which may be historic. So to use CPC dollars to further protect land, which for the most part is very well protected, and then further to possibly demolish historic structure, didn't feel in keeping with the spirit of CPA, so the committee was opposed to that. And the last application was the largest one that we received this year from Eugene Willis in the amount of 4.4 million dollars to acquire his 38 acres of land for the purposes of conservation. Again, we had a lot of discussion of this. If you look at it on the face of it, it's 38 acres adjacent to the trustees of reservations and existing hiking trails. That would seem to fit with the mandate of CPC. The issue here is there's no one to buy the land. CPC, as you guys know, is a recommending body. We're a funding mechanism to town. We would need a third party, be it the trustees of reservations themselves, the Conservation Commission here within town, any number of the groups say that we want to acquire this land, we want to take responsibility for it, and my understanding is Mr. Willis met with a number of different folks, and no one was actually willing to purchase that land. We did receive comment from the trustees of reservations that even at half that price, which wasn't a high priority for them as well. So absent a land steward partner, there was really nothing that we could do, so we did not move forward with this application, so. And that was it. $50,000 for administrative purposes. We have a, we are under the 10% required category for affordable housing and for historic preservation, so we'll have to do a set-aside amount to get those up to roughly about $300,000 each for this year. But that's everything that we funded for this year. Welcome your questions, if any.
Can you explain the last thing? You talked about the set-aside.
Yep. So the amount of money that you take in for the fiscal year, let's call it $3 million. CPA legislation requires that at a minimum, 10% of that is allocated to each of three categories, affordable housing, historic preservation, and open space and recreation count as one. So if you don't allocate dollars in applications above that amount, you have to essentially set aside to get to the minimum threshold. So what we do is we, kind of goes on the books as we got to $300,000 and change. Lynn gave me the exact number, and we set aside that, and that's what gets drawn on first for future funding. It's never really been an issue, because you always end up having a project that's large enough that you get over it and you've got the dollars set aside.
Got you. Okay. Thank you.
It makes sure that you're not constantly putting money into just buying land or just building fields.
Got you. Okay. Makes sense.
I think you all did a great job.
Thank you. I...
It's a great program that we get some of our tax dollars back to, you know, better our community in so many different ways, so I've always been a big fan of your group and what you do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate all of your hard work. I definitely noted at the beginning that you talked, that you guys were taking time to refine your process, and I think that that speaks volumes about, you know, your group and the work that you do, and we really appreciate it. I also had a whole bunch of questions about the affordable housing piece, but you completely put that all to rest when you talked about how we're going to get to that number and, you know, possibly projects of the future that will be of larger...
You know, it's an interesting point. It is one of the things that is a challenge for us, is that we are really, you know, we're reactive to the, we have, by nature, reactive to the projects that come before us, since we can't create our own.
Yes.
You know, and we've done things like the, every year is standing almost $100,000 to the Affordable Housing Trust, to allow them to be able to jump on projects when they come available. And we want to talk about more ways that we can do things like that to be a little bit more nimble than just once a year at town meeting, obviously within the legislation, but yeah, that's, that is one of the limitations that we have.
The money, the set-aside money cannot be dispersed until when next year at town, like at minimum, there's no in-between, like...
Correct. Correct. Because we can't, well, because again, the taxpayer, the town meeting is the one who approves the project. Yeah, you, I mean, there are circumstances where you can do a set-aside, where you can...
Of course.
If it's written very specifically in the warrant, and Melissa or Laurie's going to strike me down if I'm misspeaking it all, but you can do a set-aside for a very specific provision, say, listen, we don't have all the details necessarily yet.
Like the fields, for example.
We're going to come back and figure it out, but it would really have to be very carefully worded at a time meeting, so.
Well, pull up the slide that sticks with me, which is $40 million that we reinvested in the state by matching, has invested in North Andover, and I think the signage actually is really important, because folks don't know, and I think whether it's this large plot of land, or it's a little parking lot, whether it's a side lot or whatever, we've invested in that that's our ownership as a community, and I think to build and keep confidence in the projects and how this money is vested, this is a way to reinforce that, and long overdue, and I appreciate that, and also going back in history and connecting it all to a map, especially if somebody's looking at moving into this town and business is considering this town, this is one more way that we say this is, you know, we're shaping this with intention. It just not, you know, we've got a little money here, we're going to do this, maybe we'll do that, so hats off to you, because that's a gigantic undertaking, so thank you.
You're very welcome. Thank you. It's a pleasure.
No, we actually have to keep moving along right now, because we have to switch rooms, too. Brian, thank you so much. This was a wonderful presentation. You do such a good job every year and great projects that you guys are funding this year, so we appreciate that.
You're very welcome.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Manager, I was thinking about how we're going to move forward here. Me and Laurie, where we're springing about, so my recommendation would be that we move along with the articles until we get to new business section B. I don't think we'll have time to present the development agreement up here, so what I'd recommend is that we recess after a new business section A, go downstairs, join the planning board, and then re-enter our meeting back up here after our planning board meeting. Sorry to prolong, but I don't want to, I don't want to rush through it, so.
No, I appreciate that.
Yep. So next would be the goals.
The goals, okay.
So as you will remember, we did promise, when I shared my frustration about our goal process last year, that we would start updating you on the goals every quarter. So Laurie did send to you earlier today an update on where we are with all of our goals. These are the fiscal year '22 goals, the fiscal year '23 goals are the ones we just recently created. The exciting part is that the yellow highlighted ones are all the ones we've completed, and what you'll see when you look at it is that we've created, we already had a status column, we now have an update column, so it's an update 31422, and you can, I won't go through all of them in the interest of time, but you can see where we are for each of those. And what we will do is before the next fiscal year, we'll come back again and give you one more quarterly update, hopefully there'll be more yellow highlights, in order to close this year out. But it's nice to see this, because there is a lot of things that we finished, and there's also a lot of things that kind of gave us a little zing, like, hey, don't forget, you need to do that. So I think this is a good practice and something that we'd like to continue moving forward with.
Yeah, thank you for the update and kind of reminds us what we're, what our goals are and who's kind of spearheading those. Does anyone have any comments or questions for Melissa?
All just comes together for town meeting, too. I think that's the other value to this, which is as folks sort of kind of dial in, oh, we're in town meeting, what's been done, so I think folks can kind of catch up with this in a general sense. So actually, I think this is a bit of a roadmap that folks can also use as we head into town meeting, what we did, why we did.
What we did.
Yep.
And that we have a plan, right? That we have purpose and a plan.
Yeah, we're not just reactive.
All right, so I will entertain a motion to move into licensing.
Motion to move into licensing?
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, 5-0, we move into licensing. To you.
All right. Get my agenda open here. Okay, we have one item on licensing, and that's Merrimack College application for one-day wine and malt liquor license at Kessica Hall for reception on April 8, 2022, from 7:00 PM to 10:00 PM. And the reason why we are, they are applying for this is this is outside of the designated licensed areas, if recall. We started last year licensing just specific locations, so outside of that, they have to come to us. Is there anybody here from Merrimack to speak to this?
I don't think so. The application is in order. There was no issues from any of the departments. I know that Mr. Dougitt is here. I don't think he's here for this. I'm guessing, but the application is in order.
Yeah. Any other comments from the board?
No.
I'll take a motion if inclined.
I'll move that we approve the Merrimack College application for one-day wine and malt liquor license for April 8 from 7:00 PM to 10:00 PM. I'll second that.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
That's a 5-0. It's nice to have to only do this once on a great occasion. All works. Just a motion to move out of licensing, please.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Back to you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to new business. We need to vote to accept the more articles for the May 17, 2020 town meeting and refer zoning articles to the planning board.
The warrant closed at 4:30. We have 29 articles, one of which, this is a petition, I think this is the shortest warrant I've ever had, which is amazing. But yeah, we have 29 articles, one of which, this is a petition. We have to refer the three zoning articles, as well as, as Laurie reminded me earlier today, the two land acquisition articles to the planning board.
Any questions? If not, I will take a motion.
I move that we accept the town meeting warrant articles for the May 17, 2022 town meeting and refer zoning articles to the planning board.
I'll second.
I'd have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
And the two land acquisition articles as well, please. The two land acquisition articles.
All right. I have a motion, a second, a friendly amendment. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes 5-0. They, these go off to the planning board. All right, so I will take a motion to recess. We will recess and move to the senior center to start our joint meeting with the planning board. I have a motion.
So moved?
Motion, second?
Second.
All right. All these in favor?
Aye.
All right. To the senior center. Welcome back. We are back in the select boardroom, and I will entertain a motion to take us out of recess.
I move that we come out of recess.
Second?
All right. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. We are out of recess, and we are moving on to new business, section B, and that's the discussion and possible vote on the development agreements that we just heard about at the planning board joint meeting. Do you want, how do you want to handle this?
You don't want me to press again, do you?
Okay.
I don't know. We have had enough information. I'm really not sure.
Happy to do it again.
Did you hear any changes that we, from the planning board? Did you hear any substantive changes that should be made, or should we...
The only thing I think that we could change in the final agreement, I'm looking at Suzanne, is just changing the water item to be just for water improvement generally, but I think we do that in the final agreement. I don't think it's something that we need to do right now, other than that.
Instead of just specifically for that project, but for infrastructure studies improvements.
Yeah. Other than that, I don't, I didn't really...
I saw them nodding in the background. It didn't seem like they...
Yeah.
They seemed pretty agreeable to that language, and I think that, yeah, it makes sense to not be tied to one item, right?
Also, who wants to vote on the Merrimack piece of it tonight?
We can. They're both, they're both completed.
Are they completed?
Okay. They're both complete now. We can, we don't, we can, we don't have to vote on either one of them. We can.
Because it wasn't in the package, I think it would be nice to have the public have an opportunity to see it, and I would prefer to vote at a later date, but, you know, if it was in the packet and they had fair warning, but it wasn't.
So just want to reiterate why we don't have it in the packet, because I know, I did get a call from a resident about it today. So whenever we have a legal agreement, that's a contract, we don't put it in until we talk about it publicly. We didn't do it for, I went back and checked, because I was like, mine, wrong! We didn't do it for Amazon, we didn't do it for Stevens Estate, and we usually don't do it because the boards are reviewing it, and if they have any concerns about it, we're going to then go back and be negotiating again, and we don't want to hurt our negotiation power. So we usually hold it, and then the second we start talking about it, it immediately becomes public, and it's free game at that point.
So, you know, so it wasn't, good reason why it wasn't in the package, but is there a time constraint? Is there a time, something that we need to be considering, or is there something that if we can, you know, because I think if we want, that we are all on the same page and are unanimous in our voting, and I don't want to put words in words in my mouth, but I think there may be some hesitation to vote tonight on this, and, although you just said that, so I'm really not putting words in your mouth, you said it. So I think, you know, is there an opportunity that we could do that, is, and just, you know, give, now that it is public, give people a chance to review it, if they have comments on it, they can come back at our next meeting?
I think what I could, we could do, because, so where we are right now is that the final planning board meeting, final planning board public hearing is tomorrow night, and I think that maybe what we could do is I could have an understanding of the sentiment of the board, and then we could hold our vote on the 28th instead. That way, it's two weeks, y'all have had it for three weeks.
I don't think we need to go out further. I think whatever the next meeting is.
Yeah, that would be the next meeting. I wouldn't suggest going any further than that, because that's getting very, very close to a meeting, and obviously, we need to do a lot of education on this as well. We're going to want to make sure that everyone's seen the agreement once it's signed, update our website with it, and, you know, then get it out there.
So if you have the sentiment of the board, you can start crafting the real legalese of it. I mean, like you said, this is just a high-level agreement.
Some of the language is a little vague, and I understand it, because we don't, we don't know what we don't.
Right, I mean, the term sheet is the term sheet, it's done. So unless there's something that someone, one of you doesn't agree with, that's how we always do them. We have a term sheet that lays out just the, these are the benefits we're getting. The term sheet will then be turned into the formal development agreement. The formal development agreement is basically a document that has like the, whereas, we are planning on building, right, so all of that. But this term sheet, in its current form, will just be adapted into that more complicated legal document. There's really not a lot of changes that go into any of, any of the terms at all, once we've agreed on them.
So I don't, so I guess, I get the idea of kind of feedback on something, but for a practical standpoint, if there's, if there's nothing here that we really object to or have issue with, then really what you're saying is, we want to make sure people understand it. Well, why not just vote on it? And now we go to the work of making sure people understand what's been negotiated? I guess I don't, I don't really see the value in waiting, because, you know, if you sit here and say, we want to, we want to throw it out there for people to give you feedback, well, in practicality, what you just said is, we're going to take all that feedback, but there's not much you can do to this unless we decide to come back and rewrite the terms all over again, which I'm not hearing there's a consensus that we want to do. So do we have an exercise which says, people give us all this feedback, okay, but the terms are already set, or do we say, listen, here's what's been negotiated, here are the terms, this is what we're standing, this is how we stand as select board, and now we take our stand as select board, and now we engage the rest of the community on, here's why we made that choice? I think we're at a decision point here, and especially since we're, we're less than 60 days from town meeting, every week counts. And again, if there's a general consensus that this, which I think I just heard, we're all in agreement that these are the terms that we all like, what do we get for those two weeks? I guess I'm not really seeing the value to that.
Well, I guess it's the legislative body didn't really even know the particulars of this, it wasn't on the agenda, and a point where people would say, oh, I got to go down and see, because it wasn't posted, you couldn't click on it.
It was on our agenda.
It was on our agenda, but they couldn't read it.
They couldn't read the Amazon tip either, prior to your meeting.
But this is a little bit, this is a little bit different than the Amazon tip. People are going to be displaced, homes might be taken on the highway, there's a whole bunch of things.
The highway, that's Mastiachi.
This is the agreement, this isn't the Royal Crest project, this is just the agreement. This isn't, this is nothing more than saying, if the project goes through, this is what is getting done. This is not saying the Royal Crest project is going through, this is just saying, if the Royal Crest project goes through, you've got to, this has to be part of it. It is not saying the Royal Crest project goes through. I, and I appreciate you bringing that point up, I want people to be really, really clear on that. This is just saying, this is part of the deal when we, as a town, decide to vote on Royal Crest. That's what we're doing tonight, is we, as a select board, are saying, this is part of your consideration.
Right, it's two different jobs, right, when you think about it, and it's a great point about the legislative branch, because the legislative branch's job is to vote on the zoning. So the legislative branch should make the decision on whether or not the project can go forward, right? That's their job, and then your job is to negotiate the contract. And so there's two different roles here, both equally important.
The development agreement is going to be important to the legislative body as well.
Of course.
But it's not their, it's just not their job to negotiate it. No, it's not their job to negotiate it, but I still think that they should still be able to weigh in, they should be able to make comment.
Isn't that part, isn't that part of the first two meetings, and like the feedback, and what's important to the residents, and then Melissa took that and negotiated this deal?
Right, one of the important things that we did in negotiating was making sure that we reviewed all of, and just so people at home understand this, we made sure we reviewed all of the impact reports that were done, all of the pair reviews, the comments that were made, so that we understood what abutters were saying, what residents were saying, so that we had those impacts. I, you know, for me, if it makes the board as a whole feel better to wait, I understand that sentiment, and.
I am more than happy, the board can do what they want, I just know what I will do.
I understand.
And I just, I firmly believe that, yeah, it would be nice that it, that it was in the packet, that people could click on it and see it. I don't know that there was really anything in there that couldn't be, couldn't be today or over the weekend that they couldn't have looked at. There was, there was nothing that was really highly confidential, but that's, that's my personal belief. I do think that this is a really important project to the town, people are very concerned about it. And I just really felt as though that, you know, people should have had an opportunity to take a look at it, regardless of the Amazon and other projects, even if those were done for those, it doesn't mean that we have to continue to do that. I feel as though the people in the town, you know, should have, should have had an opportunity to look at it, make comment on it, so forth and so on, but, so just go ahead and, I mean, if the group wants to vote, I'm perfectly fine with that.
So if I could just address, Chris, you asked what, you know, what do we get for the two weeks? Okay, and I think what we get is the goodwill and transparency that, you know, we're giving the folks, folks at home, our legislative body, a chance to look at the document, a chance to, if they want to come on the 28th and provide feedback, they can, and we haven't voted on it yet. Now, is that going to change, is that going to change, maybe not, but I think there's goodwill there, and I think it's in the spirit of transparency, which we do want to be transparent all the time about this project, and we have been. And if there is some view that this was not done transparently, then I think that addresses that, and if it doesn't mean too much to the timeline of this, if it, if waiting two weeks is not going to cause any significant issues, then I think that waiting two weeks is a good investment in goodwill.
Thank you. You said it better than I.
I don't agree, I just don't agree. Because I don't think, because I think there are two ways to look at transparency, because the other action is that, in reality, you're saying, I'm getting this out there, I'm giving you two weeks to look at it, but in practicality, what my concern is, that there's a laundry list, let's play out the rest of that now, there's this laundry list of, well, why isn't this $100,000, why don't we do this, why don't we do that? Melissa, and we've been negotiating this, and you've all been at the table, you know what it takes, it's not practical or likely that we're going to be able to go back and do those sort of things, so I would say to you, do you endanger goodwill? The other way to look at this, do you endanger goodwill by opening up the door to give the sense that all these things can be negotiated when they can't at that point? Do we sit here at the table and basically say in two weeks, yep, yep, good point, yep, yep, all that, yep, but we can't, we're not changing it, and we're going forward? And people sit there and go like, well, then why did we give you all this feedback and all that? As opposed to saying, starting tonight, after this meeting, going forward, we made the decision on this agreement because we saw it had this, this, and this, and going forward with it. There are just two different, two different ways of looking at it. And so that, you know, you're looking at it one way, I'm looking at it that way, trying again to get to the transparency piece.
Realistically, if we wait the two weeks, I mean, any of the changes that could possibly happen to this agreement are things that could still sort of happen as the, like, because there are going to be tiny little tweaks, like, the $500,000 can go to any water, you know? So, but you can look at us and tell us that there is nothing major that is going to change about this agreement.
I think the really hard part about, about opening the negotiations and having comments on them is that, or increased comments on them, is that beyond what we've already received through the public comment and all of the different documents that have already come for the planning board and been digested by us, is that there are things that we already tried to negotiate that were rejected, right? That we can't really talk about publicly. And so we may have a resident who comes forward with a great idea, that we all think's a great idea too, but that we just, it's not going to happen. And that's going to be difficult for us to talk about publicly. That's the only concern I have about kind of opening negotiations further.
I mean, I think people understanding the process you went through to get to this agreement is the transparent part of it, right? Like, we took feedback from every step along the way, and that is how this agreement was developed, and nothing significant, because exactly, like, I mean, there were things that I was really hoping for that were just a non-starter, so, you know, I fully believe you did the absolute best you could to get an agreement that's beneficial to us. So I sort of am falling toward, I think that transparency of waiting two weeks is almost like a false sense of transparency, because there's nothing significant that will change about that agreement, and the manner in which the agreement, the agreement was created was inclusive of feedback from all, all different kinds of people and their opinions. So I definitely waver it back and forth, I've changed my mind sitting here a few times about what we should do, but I, you know, have the utmost faith in the process that went into it, and I think that puts us in a good position. Again, if nothing can really change about it, then let's not give people that false sense that their feedback is going to change things.
So I agree with you. I'm sitting here wavering a little bit, but I, I go back to the fact that we have Melissa here, who we've hired, and she has negotiated with Trinity, and that was, that's her, that's her job, is to negotiate the best deal and then to present it to us. And it's our turn to talk about it. Right now, we're talking about whether we're going to vote or not, but I guess I haven't heard from everybody, how do you actually feel about the agreement? Is there, Rosemary, you said there's some vague language in here, so what is the vague language that you don't like, I guess, is, would be my question? Or is, and?
I think that you're on the right track, we haven't really talked about the agreement, so.
Is everybody, is every, I think it's a great deal, I mean, I think you did, you've touched on things for our whole community, and we'll see, there are great benefits that are here. I don't, there's nothing vague to me, and I, I think there's a lot of good things in it, so I don't, what's everybody else feel? That's why we're here, right?
I mean, just my thoughts are, my, you know, I literally was shocked that they would agree to this, and I had, I had no idea that it would be to this extent. I knew we were working on a development agreement, but I never thought $9.2 million, just from the, just from Trinity and another million on top of that from Merrimack. That took me totally by surprise, and maybe I was being naive, and maybe, you know, this is a standard thing, but I was very impressed and very happy with the extent of this agreement. I mean, I started, when we, when we got this last week, on March 7th, I started going through and adding up the numbers, and went, what, this can't be right. And then you sent me the term sheet, I'm like, wow, it sent us the term sheet. I said, wow, that it was right. So I was really surprised, so as far as the agreement is concerned, I'm very happy with it, and I'm very supportive of it.
Any other, Rosemary?
Well, I'm still.
My point is still, is still the same, that, that it wasn't attached to the agenda, and.
But is there, is there a specific item or a vagueness to it that, because you just mentioned vagueness, so I'm just curious, so that Melissa, I mean, if we were to go back to the negotiating table or to talk about different items, what is it that?
You know, Laura, it's still the same point that I, that I brought, I, you know, I mean, if we want to go over this, I guess I can sit down and we can nitpick it, but my point is that, to me, it's, it's, other people have said in the room that there's a transparency issue, it was not on the agenda, you couldn't click on it and review it, it just said it was going to be discussed. And I think, you know, we all have to work together in this community, and we, and we need to have the trust of the people, and I just think that this, this project is huge, and a lot of people don't like it. They don't like it, and then by not having it out there, makes me uncomfortable.
But this isn't the project, it's just the development agreement, and there's a lot of things.
But see, people would see this and just say, well, I, I don't, they still have a right to look at it.
Absolutely, absolutely, and they will get an opportunity to look at it.
Okay, I've made my point, and I'm not, you know, I don't know what else to say to you.
But there's nothing, okay, there's nothing specific, though, that you want to comment on that you like or don't like in the agreement? No? Okay, no, it's fine, I just, you said vague, so I thought I'd ask, that's all.
Well, I use, there were a couple of things I mentioned to Melissa earlier, but again, and I want to state for the record, no matter what anybody feels about this project, Melissa is 100% right. We need to put forth a development agreement.
Yes.
Whether you support the project or not, we need the best development agreement that we can get. I absolutely agree with that. That's our job, even if you don't support the project. You want to lay out the best for the people at town meeting on both sides, all sides of the issue, and at the end of the day, they're going to decide. And if you're right, if we don't do our job, we failed them. And I absolutely agree with that. Other projects that I've been on in town, before some of you being on the board, that were highly controversial, and my, my philosophy then was, you put the best deal you can possibly get, get the best people on board, if the people choose this, and then you better get the best deal and the best rules, the best laws or whatever, if they choose that. And I feel the same way. We need to, but I still also, it's, to me, it was something that, you know, it wasn't, it wasn't made available, and I just, that's, I'm just going to say the same thing, I think we need a partnership, the executive branch and the legislative branch, in order to make anything come to fruition. You know, they need to, that's all. So, I mean, the board can certainly do what they want, I will abstain, and that's how I feel.
Well, I think it's, I think, yeah, I think you make some excellent points, and that's what leadership is about. I think that's why we, why there's a select board, which is, we're in a position at times to lead the community. That's what this is about. Melissa has negotiated this on behalf of the board and behalf of the town, and sometimes, I think, sitting in this chair, now I haven't sat as long as you or Dick, but here, long enough to recognize that there are times and situations where we need to go to the community and say, we have a track record of delivering and being transparent and having good faith. We negotiated the Amazon agreement, we negotiated the Stevens Estate, the town was wildly behind us, and those hit all the spots. It is the same pro forma for this, and so I would say, there's a track record here of performance, there's a track record here of transparency, there's a track record here of leadership coming from this board, and I think this is an opportunity for us as a board to establish it very clearly, to say, yes, to your point, exactly, Rosemary, this is a tremendous agreement that has been negotiated, we are very pleased with it, we endorse it, I will say, I endorse it, and I think that's important for us as a town to understand why we endorse it and why it's at the point it's at here. So I think this is an opportunity for us to kind of lead the discussion.
Let me ask, what is it that will change for you over two weeks that will keep you from abstaining your vote? Like, what is it? Again, I keep wavering back and forth, so, you know, help me understand what will change over the next two weeks, knowing that the bones of this agreement are not going to change, so what will be different that will make you feel more comfortable voting?
I think it's the principle of the thing, in my opinion, that it should have been made public for, unlike even the Amazon agreement, well, Stevens Estate was pretty controversial, I will say that, but this, this project, I'm not necessarily saying this agreement, but it's all part and parcel, and there has to be a level of trust, this project really affects almost every citizen in town by way of traffic, by, you know, a whole bunch of things, and I just think that the people should at least have a look at it before we vote on it, and that's, that's it. I mean, you're not going to convince me, so.
It's okay to disagree.
Yeah, absolutely.
And we're all doing it very swiftly.
So this discussion actually started with, tell us what you think of the agreement, and I just wanted to be clear that, overall, the agreement is amazing. I am still, I still remain disappointed in how unconcerned Merrimack particularly seems about the pedestrian safety piece of it. But I understand that we have to move forward, and they'll, you know, we will, but I just want to be clear that that is still a piece that, until there's a pedestrian, a bridge, I'm not sure I'm going to be happy, so. But other than that, I want to say, you know, I, I serve on this board with, in the spirit of transparency, I'm open and accessible and listen to everybody who comes to me with different opinions, and. And one thing I know for sure is Melissa and her team did the same thing when coming to this agreement. So, I, I guess I'm landing on the side of, we've beat that drum. We've come to the end of that road. And there are so many other pieces of this project that do need to be worked out. They are not, you know, final. But this is a really solid deal for our town. It is, there's so many benefits. I think of all the people who are saying, why is Facilities Master Plan 2 going to take so long? Well, here is one way that we might be able to expedite that plan. That's huge. And that's just one of the many things that make a huge difference. So, I think, you know, ultimately, I guess I don't see, me listening to people talk about it for two weeks is not going to change the agreement. So, I'm willing to vote.
Just speaking of my team, Suzanne, Andrew, and Jean. Amazing work. They really did awesome job on this. It's been three years of, and they've done a great job.
Three years of background and three years of listening and three years of negotiate, you know, negotiating on some level to get to this point. It, it, it's a, it's a good, it's a fabulous deal for our town. If the project goes forward, it really, this doesn't, this doesn't mean that the project's going forward. It doesn't, all of that has to be decided at town meeting. This is just a benefit that if it does, that mitigates some of the burden that the town will have. That being said, I don't, I don't hear any really comments from the board about any changes to this other than what we heard at planning and changing that $500,000 from specifically to Great Pond Road, purchase of Great Pond Road to the water mitigation or study or improvements.
One other question before.
Sure.
Is there any chance of changing the language around the million, the money that it will be in reserve for pedestrian to bring them back to the, you know, if the costs are in excess, like that we will renegotiate with them or come back to them or, okay.
Yeah, well, no, the pedestrian portion of the, is there a way to bring, to hold them to coming back to? But.
I don't think so.
Okay.
I do think that if the pedestrian footbridge is triggered, it will require a lot of sequencing between us, Mast Dot and the college.
And Mast Dot is going to be the bridge to making those pedestrian changes happen.
And the first time.
The million dollars.
The first time that came up, the bridge, that's how it went forward before it went off the side of the bridge. So, I anticipate that's the direction in which we would go.
Okay, thanks.
The only thing I guess I would disagree with is that if we, we don't use all the money that we split it with the developer. I think we shouldn't split it. I think we should just keep it as part of the agreement. No, no, I'm not kidding.
We'll have to make sure we use it.
I'm pretty sure we'll use it. That's exactly.
There we go. There we go. I just, it's like, you know.
To make sure we use it.
They're willing to give it, but if we don't use it, oh, we want it back. They're still willing to give it. That, I mean, if that was out there, my feeling is that we're willing to give it to us.
And we'll make sure we keep the interest in the escrow account, too.
So, one thing I did like, and I hadn't thought of it, was, you know, some kind of a fencing going down the middle of the, of the, of the, yeah. You know, I don't know how attractive that would look or what that would be like. But, I mean, it is one way of keeping the students, you know, in, whether it's the crossing or whatever, going to that one location.
But that was my idea about having the wrought iron fencing on the whole part of 114 with one gate so that the kids, you know, they have that rail fence right now.
At the college.
Yeah, the college. That doesn't stop anything. It doesn't stop kids.
It's kind of an electric cattle fence.
Yeah, there we go.
I have a dick to your point, so I saw a kid.
Last week, there was a kid, you know, he literally had a scooter. And he was not from here to the back room here from the crosswalk. He just scooted across and meanwhile, traffic's going like this back and forth. To your point, if there was something in that island, that just, you just won't cross there. So, I think that's.
Well, that's, well, that's the same thing with the other fences, that there's only one way of getting there.
Well, I don't think you even need that. You don't even need that. And 125, the state pays for it, oh, by the way. So, I mean, to me, that's something that, you know, we could, we could pound out there. I think we may have found ourselves at least a, you know, a viable or a potent piece to address a little bit of that. Because literally, as I see students cross there, if you make it impossible for them to stop at that island, they're not going to, across the island, because you're stopped there, you can't, there's no place to stand. You are in the highway. I mean, it, it's, I think, a pretty effective tool. So, I would push back on that hard.
So, that's come up.
Correct. Andrew and Suzanne with Mast Dot as well as with us. And was dismissed by both parties, I believe. Mast Dot and by Trinity early on, even before we were in negotiations about the development agreement. Yeah.
Are you sure you were referencing the idea of a?
A fence down the middle of 114?
You know, you rejected the idea of a fence.
On the Merrimack.
On the, on the other side. Because it was part of the discussion about making sure people can be funded to the pedestrian bridge if it were to be built.
My understanding was that they did not want the fence down the middle of the highway because, one, sometimes people climb the fence. And when they do that, and then they cross the street, it's very dangerous, particularly students, because you don't expect someone to then be there. Now, they are.
Walking over the fence.
And I think that's what happened to that young student.
Yes. I think you'd be, I think personally, you'd be better off with the fence around the college, like Selectwoman Smidely is mentioning.
One entrance.
So, they only can cross there.
Because when it comes down the middle of the road, that's, that's what Mast Dot basically had said to us, that what happens is people climb those fences. It happens a lot when there is a pedestrian footbridge, which is one of the reasons we talked about it. You don't expect people to, you don't expect someone to be in the middle of the highway when there's a fence. Sometimes you see it on Route 1.
You do see it on Route 1. But then, as a driver, you could see the pedestrian like.
But it's also dependent on the height, though, too, though.
It does, yeah.
I mean, it's one thing to put up a four-foot fence. If you put up a six-foot fence, nobody's going to climb over six-foot. And if they do, you know what? That's the one in the, there's a problem, right? There's another problem. So, I guess I would say, and I get it, it's outside of the comfort zone and so forth. But I, I do a lot of driving across the Northeast. There are a lot of different ways to, to do something in that island that can be also helping with, I'm thinking about when you have headlights, when you have sunset, you have, you know, plowing, you've got a lot of things that, that fence could facilitate in some ways. And I would challenge Mast Dot to say, wait a minute. Tell us all the designs that you have used and have approved. Not to get too far down that rabbit hole, but I do think. Yeah.
I think that's another, we've got these pieces of the puzzle coming together. And those are the details, right, that we're all kind of talking about.
It's easy to fall into one. It's got stuck in one.
That's what I meant by just fine tuning some of the stuff, but it's.
But I don't think that would be.
That's not in this.
That would be part of the 114 project, yeah. So, I can bring that back to them, to 114. I can bring it back to the 114 folks and see what they say.
I guess where I.
I will. Representative Minicucci is on it when it comes to Mast Dot. Yep.
I guess where I land is that two weeks isn't going to change any of these numbers. I don't know that it's going to change any of our votes. And I welcome the public to come, and you are welcome to public comment next, any meeting. If you have, if you want to, I don't know, praise this or tell us that we missed the mark, you're more than welcome to call us, email us, come to our meetings. But unfortunately, at this point, that's not going to change anything.
Again, I'm perfectly comfortable with what my vote will be. So, I, I honestly, I am. I mean, I, so, have at it.
Motion to approve the world press development agreements as presented.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second.
And then this is, you mean both agreements at once?
Both.
Both.
Okay.
Both agree.
Clearly on the record, the group has worked hard. You've worked hard. For me, yeah.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I have four yeses and one abstaining. All right, thank you. Thank you to Melissa, to Lori, to Dee, to Andrew, to the whole team for all your hard work. I know it's many years of time and effort to get here to this point, and we've got many more to go. This is just small, this is a piece, again, of the puzzle. It is not approval of the project. It is just a benefit if we do move forward and approve this at town meeting. It does go back to the legislative body, which is you, the residents, that are probably not watching anymore. But. But that is, the final decision is in your hands, May 17th at town meeting. So, all right. So, I lost my agenda.
I just found mine. It was in the middle of papers. So, the next item is the consent on KP law.
Okay, so, we are gonna, KP law has asked us to.
They've asked us to waive a conflict. They would like to also represent, they represent us as special counsel. They'd like to represent Mass Audubon in relations to the conservation restriction that they'd be managing for us, they're managing Mass Audubon property at the Stevens estate. And town council is like, would like to weigh in. I don't know if you want me to just read your email if you want to come up and speak? Come up and speak.
Just in my role is looking out for the interests of the town and making sure that there's, you know, try to eliminate all risks of harm to town. One of the reasons that there is a conflict of interest provision with attorneys is to protect the client. And so by waiving that conflict of interest provision, the town becomes in more of a vulnerable position because that's what it's designed to do, is to protect you from that. And so you'll be having the law firm representing Mass Audubon, which they, in the same transaction as they did represent the town in the Stevens estate. And in my opinion, unless the town receives some great benefit from waiving something that is in your interest and in protecting the town, then you wouldn't do it. Because there's no sense in taking on a risk unless there's some benefit to you. And I know one of the reasons that Audubon is interested in KP law, I think, is a relationship with them. But if, but you're really looking out for the town's interest, then that's sort of my role and what, you know, I need to say in order to protect the town's interest on this.
Thank you.
So, let me just ask a question. So, the, so I don't know anything about the inner mechanics of a large law firm. Obviously, KP is very large. But are, are departments or groups siloed in any way? I mean, it seems to me that the possibility of large firms kind of having this crossover happens. Am I on the line in thinking about that?
Well, the reason that they've presented the letter to you is because under the law, they're required to. So, they're, even if there are silos, there's still, there's a provision as attorneys, you can't represent different clients in the same transaction, right? Because you're an advocate on behalf of a client, and then you can't sort of switch sides. And so, whether they have silos, I don't know the mechanics of how KP law functions. I have no idea. All I know is that there is a provision in the law that says this, and the reason is to protect the client.
Can you clarify then? So, the determination part of the letter, the letter that they wrote to us says that they will represent the Mass Audubon society only for purposes of this conservation restriction grant. And the town of North Andover will be represented by internal counsel.
Yes.
So.
They represented the town of North Andover with regard to the Stevens estate before.
So, they are internal counsel in this.
No, but they have.
They have a legal opinion of Stevens estate in the past.
And they do represent the town in other matters also. So, they, they're actively the town's attorneys.
Okay.
So, they negotiated us to get to the agreement on Stevens estate, which included the conservation restriction that would be conveyed to Mass Audubon. And now they're representing Mass Audubon to, with the agreement that they're going to hold with us. So, it's kind of like a, right?
Yes.
Sort of.
So, I think our representation is in the past, so we can't change that. But Mass Audubon is in the future. And there's plenty of other law firms out there that I'm sure can do an adequate job of representing them in this type of, of an issue. So, I mean, I tend to agree with the town attorney that we should, you know, eliminate any risk.
It's probably also just a bad precedent. You know, even if this didn't, the risk wasn't enormous, it's just, it's sort of a bad precedent.
It's not that many attorneys at KP law, honestly. And a lot of them, conservation ones, we probably typically deal with. So, it's probably a better idea not to use them.
So, do we need a motion to?
We can take no action if you'd like, and I can just say that you did not vote, you did not vote to waive the conflict. It's that simple. Nope. Didn't take any action. They took no action. Yep, I can be the heavy.
That's the power tonight, huh?
Yep.
All right, so I will move on to the approval of the minutes for open session in February 28th, 2022. Are there any comments, adjustments, or?
Is that where I was recused myself from the?
So, the amendment is, because what we voted on was to open the warrant and close the warrant. But in the notes, it just said that we opened the warrant.
Oh, okay.
So, that was the adjustment.
I'll move that the select board approved the open session minutes of February 28th, 2022 as presented.
I'll second.
Any other comments on the February 28th, 2022? No? All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pass this 5-0, and then I'll take a motion on the amended open session.
I'll move that the select board approves the amended open session minutes of January 24th, 2022 as presented.
I'll second.
Any other discussion? I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, our next meeting is, oh, town manager update. Oh, nothing.
Nothing's going on.
Nothing else is going on.
Nothing's going, happening.
All right, any select board comments or updates?
Of the COVID testing sites that are, stop the spread sites are going to be closing at the end of March. The Lawrence General site will remain open, but the others, La Frutaria and Dr. Lawrence Family Health Center, all of those are going to be going away at the end of March. I, it's, it's actually great that we're at that point, as far as I'm concerned.
Former president just came down with it.
You can still go to Lawrence General.
Yes, the Lawrence General, the drive up is still going to be up.
Since we're on NA CAM, I should say, there's a survey that NA CAM is doing right now. It's all part of their renewal and funding process. So, please, all fans of NA CAM, watching us tonight and otherwise, please respond to that survey. Give them the feedback, give them the thumbs up, if you would.
No, all right. Our next meeting will be March 28th at 7:00 PM. I will take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye, we are adjourned.